Good evening, everybody. Wow. That's impressive. Welcome to the October 1st meeting. Please be sure you silence your phones. And I guess we'll get started.
Richardson?
Here.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the bright light before which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for providing for our needs. We thank you for our city employees and pray that you protect them as they serve the citizens of Hutchinson. Lord, guide this council as they seek to do what is in the best interests of all of the citizens of Hutchinson. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next item. All right, hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look that over. And if there's no questions, I would call for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Yes.
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 Yes. Next item, please.
Item number 5A. Consider resolution authorizing conducting of bank business by city manager Enrico Vegas.
Hi, Angela.
Hello, Angela Richard, Director of Finance. The resolution before you authorizes Enrico, the new city manager, to conduct banking business on behalf of the city of Hutchinson. It also removes the former interim city manager, Mary Grace Clements, in order to add him. Banks will require this in order to add him on our banking account so that he can sign checks on our behalf. Staff recommends approval of the resolution as stated. Are there any questions?
I have none. Somebody like to make a motion to approve this resolution?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing conducting, or authorizing conducting of bank business by city manager Enrico Vegas.
A second.
Richardson?
Yes.
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 Item 5B. Consider resolution approving a special event in a designated entertainment district for Reno County versus the World Boxing Event.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Council, you have before you proposed resolution for a special event district. This is at the Markland Shopping Center area. The reason the city approves the special event is because we regulate alcohol beverage consumption within the city, and it also covers in private parking lots. Not in private businesses, but private parking lots, and you're getting two of me. And so that's why you see that before you. And this event occurred last year. It was actually during the fair and would ask you to approve the resolution.
All right, I remember that event, and I remember approving this last year as well, so.
Yep.
I don't remember seeing or hearing anything, reports of anything negative that happened during the event, so I think it makes sense to approve this again.
All right. Motion?
I move to approve a resolution to authorize a special event in a designated entertainment district pursuant to City Code Section 18-801 for the Reno County versus the World Boxing Event and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
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 Yes. New business? All right. Who's going to take care of that?
Swearing?
Just for those of you here in the audience, we have a city clerk that takes care of business and has to be sworn by the state of Kansas, I believe. It's an official designation. We are making a change to that. Karen's been doing this for many, many years and is gonna have a different role with the city, so that's why we're doing this.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mary Rogers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Kansas.
Of the state of Kansas.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
Of the city of Hutchinson.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of city clerk.
Of city clerk.
So help me God. So help me God.
I want to highlight Karen's dedication to the city clerk responsibilities for the last 16 years and her service to the city of Hutchinson. I want to present her with this plaque to remind her of the time, of her time as a city clerk and how much we appreciate her service. You'll notice that the plaque says "Making the Difference" instead of "Here's a Service." Because I feel like when she was the city clerk, she went out of her way above and beyond to serve the citizens in her community. From those individuals and businesses she licensed to others she interacted with in the community. During this transition, I look forward to bringing you more opportunities and challenges in the finance department as you help me tackle the budget and the audit every year. Thank you, Karen, for all you have done for the city as a city clerk, and congrats on your new opportunities.
Thank you very much.
Next item.
Item 6B. Update on structure determined to be unsafe in nature for the atrium hotel and conference center.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Williams, Director of Community Development. I'm here today to provide another update on the atrium hotel. As you know, on August 20th, 2024, council passed a resolution finding the atrium and conference center to be unsafe and dangerous and directed the structure to be repaired or removed. Council allowed the property owner 30 days to repair or demolish the structure with a required cash bond in the amount sufficient to cover the costs of removal, estimated at that time at $2 million. On September 17th, the property owner presented formal plans to you on the rehabilitation of the atrium. City council declined to grant an extension at that time or drop the requirement of a cash bond. To date, no visible progress on the repair or demolition of the atrium has been made, and the property owner has failed to provide the required cash bond. On August 27th, the city of Hutchinson released a request for bid for asbestos removal and the demolition of the building. Bids were received on September 24th, and staff is in the process of reviewing those bids. Once we had a better idea of how much the demolition was going to cost, we did reach back out to the property owner to discuss a potential revised recommendation to city council. Staff was willing to recommend an extension of the timeframe to the end of the year to demolish the building and lower the required cash bond in the amount, to the amount of $999,000 with proof that a signed demolition contract and was, with a signed demolition contract available here tonight and the required cash bond available here tonight. The property owner expressed uncertainty about being able to secure that cash bond and ultimately decided that if the conference center portion of the building was required to stay, there was no value in the plan for him. Due to the lack of progress on the repair or demolition of the structure and the lack of the required cash bond, the city will be moving forward with the demolition of the structure. A formal report of the bids and awards will, and an award of the bid will take place in a couple of weeks. I also wanted to make note of a couple items that were discussed at the last meeting, the first being the unpaid abatement invoices on the property. Policy allows the property owner 30 days to pay these invoices before they're certified to the county clerk as special assessments against the property. And at this point, all of the abatement invoices have been certified as special assessments on the property, so that's how they'll have to be paid. And secondly, I brought copies of the 26 letters that we have sent the property owner about the code violations, abatement invoices, and public hearings that have been sent over the last few years in case we need to discuss those tonight. We also have our new building official, Jason Lady, who's here tonight, happy to answer any questions, but with that, I'd be available to answer any of your questions.
Well, I had several, but you've answered them all. Is there, does council have any questions with Matt?
No.
I have a question. I've seen like a semi-trailer at the atrium as well as some smaller vehicles. Do you know what has been happening at the building the past few days?
We did let the property owner know that if anytime they wanted to get into the building, they just needed to coordinate that with us, and we heard from the property owner this weekend and coordinated with them so that the property owner and their representatives could access the building yesterday and today. I'm not sure, I believe they were, we were told that they were looking at the building for potential plans moving forward, but I believe the property owner's here tonight. They might be able to speak to them.
All right. Joshua, would you like to speak to us?
Hello, City Council. I, 30 days was too less a day to get a cash bond. No insurance company would entertain in, within 30 days. They want longer periods of time. So what I went and did is I put a CD of a million dollar with Frontier State Bank and, and, and made them give me a CD loan approval for a million dollar from the CD, like a CD loan, because it was too short a period for me to get a loan. And with that saying, they're ready to give me another million dollar, so a total of $2 million with my CD loan of a million dollar and securing the building. Second, you know, last time I came, because I was, I had come to the city with the plans to make the back of the hotel as storage and the front as retail banquet, whatever other areas. The city manager and the city staff looked at it and they thought it was a good idea and they will support it, but when I came here, it didn't happen. They didn't support me. And, and, and then, therefore, yesterday I heard from the city, from Matthew, that if I'm, if I demolish the whole building, they'll support me. Once again, the building, the convention center is a real good structure. For no reason, I would recommend to tear it down because it's only 14 years old and $15 million spent to build that. So I recommend tearing down everything around it, leaving the convention center and the atrium. Within December, I will have it taken out, secured, fenced up, try to sell it in the next six months or so. I have been approached by a couple of, you know, a flooring company and another business and two other churches that, different people that have offered to, you know, to either buy or lease or own or financing. So I'm ready to tear everything down except these things, redo it, bring it to City Code, have the, the demolishing part can be done before December. I talked to the, I met with the demolishing guys, and they said that that's a possibility. Then they said they're already doing some demolition in the town, so they're, they're willing to do that. So if I don't demolish within December, in January, I will give you a free and clear property that the city can do whatever they want. That's my assurance. Instead of going to battle and fight with you guys, this is what I propose, and if I don't fulfill, fulfill my commitment, you can have the property. And that's all I need to say. If you'll give me a chance to do it, I'll fix it up, I'll sell it. If I cannot sell it within the, I put the phase two, I'll keep the whole banquet area, and if I'm not able to sell it within the next year, I'll build an 80-room hotel there and connect it to the banquet space. And all, a brand-new place. You know, I'll, I'll request your support in this. If you cannot, whatever you, whatever you'll finalize, I'm sure that. Any questions? I can answer.
I don't have any questions. Does council have any questions? Any comments?
It, it seems like you've put a lot more thought into this now than you had previously. So why now, all of a sudden, you have effort, like in the 11th hour, you're coming to us saying you have a plan when you didn't even communicate with anybody in the city for at least the first couple of weeks?
I closed it in 2019 because I was losing a lot of money. I already told you the story before. A property with a convention center in this small town cannot support a convention center business and all the utilities. And so the city used to pay the convention center in the 3% CD taxes. In 2014, until 2014, that means from 2009 or 8 when they built it until 2014, even though five years it was owned by the bank and the bank took it. When I took it, you know, the funds were cut off. And so it was very hard, but still, I put a lot of money into it fixing it up because when I came in, it was leaking, it was, you know, it had, I put a whole new roof. I did all those work, like I said, you all, but I kept coming back to the city and saying, I cannot operate an old hotel that just takes in money without any help from you all, and I recommend that I'll build a hotel. At that point, you know, I'll remove the rooms and build a hotel with a convention center. At that point, they decided to send it as RFP, and they did not select me, and they went with the mall group to do the project. And then that failed, and obviously, by the time, it was already two years down the road and our negotiations fell nowhere. City was going to buy it for them. I bet you they, since they pulled out of the contract, the contract went nowhere, then they, you know, they offered me 1.6 million. I, I, I was agree, I agreed to it, and then they said that was asbestos, and I was never contacted back, you know, and I heard from, from the city council that they want to offer me a million dollar, and it was never passed on to me. It just, and it just faded away. And I had to go, if I, if I would have strung myself in Kansas with these properties, I would have choked myself to bankruptcy. So I had to go and build new hotels and build new constructions and, you know, in other cities, and I moved on. And now that I have built some cash flow, I'm here to redo the properties and fix it up and try to sell it and at least break even in it, but.
So if you don't mind, can you go back through, you, you say, what are you going to have done by January 1st?
If you see all those rooms, so I'm recommending to keep this area and all the rooms, tear down all the rooms because they are all banquet spaces, meeting rooms and banquet spaces, if you see, and then in this area right here, if it doesn't, after I fix this up and it doesn't sell in the next year, I'm proposing to both the atrium and hotel attached to the banquet area.
So if, if the demolition of the rooms are not complete and the debris hauled off by January 1st, you said you would transfer the ownership of the property to the city?
Yes.
And we pulled the bond?
The bond?
We would need that.
I'll, I'll try that again, but I have a CD.
The CD, I'm sorry, the, the million-dollar CD?
Yes. No, I'm not gonna, obviously, the million-dollar CD is going to be used to demolish, the CD loan is going to be used to demolish the building and to start the, you know, to do the electric plumbing, everything, to set it up as a big, nice banquet area and retail space. And I'll try to sell it as is after fixing everything. If I'm not able to sell, then I'm recommending, you know, I'll go ahead and loan.
You just said, you just said like a minute ago that a banquet and a hotel, a banquet hall and a hotel wouldn't work in this city without help from the city. We're not offering you additional incentives, no additional rebates like you used to receive for repairs and whatnot. So what's different now? Because that's not, you just said it's not gonna work, and then you said, but that's my plan.
It was not working before because it was an old hotel, and people, it was, it's hard for people to stay, and it was all one property. But if it is separated from the old building and just, you know, not completely attached, but just attached by a hallway, and both utilities are completely separate, we could turn everything off and not have just a whole new hotel and the old hotel. You know, you, we can only use banquet spaces when, you know, the utilities of that, when we have functions and have, you know, the hotel operated by itself.
I guess that makes sense, but that doesn't seem like that would provide you with so much savings that it makes the project workable when all you're doing is like shutting the lights off to a big room. Like, that's what a banquet hall is essentially.
Yes, and I'm hoping, you know, that is the, you know, phase two. I'm hoping that one of these businesses who approached me will buy it as is building after I demolish the whole thing with the banquets and, you know, or retail. That's my hope.
My issue is, I, again, it's a trust issue with you, and, and I, I don't have much trust that you're.
You all gave me 30 days to do all this, and 30 days to create a bond and 30 days to demolish.
You've had more than 30 days.
You all gave me 30 days.
You've had more than 30 days.
From the time I talked to you.
Let me, let me just finish my thought here. I have a little bit of an issue with.
But if, honestly, you all have decided what you have decided, I am putting my best foot forward, whatever you decide, you know, we can go on with a fight or we can do something as simple as this.
I guess I'll direct my comments to my fellow council members, and I have an issue with the certificate of deposit being, with the bank having a lien on that, giving him the money. We would never get the million dollars if, if he doesn't perform because the bank owns that CD.
I think what he's saying is he could only secure a CD at this point. It should be converted to a bond once it's, he has a little bit more time, is I think is what he was saying. Because it would have to be contingent upon that being converted to a bond. And if, if we were to go into an agreement, if we were to go into an agreement that if he doesn't perform what he says he was going to do and he hands the property over, I'd say it needs to be a $2 million bond because we have to get through that lien act, the lien on the property through the mortgage or, mortgagee, the bank. Because if he were to, and I'm not using the right parlance, I'm sure, but say quit claim deed the property over to the city, there's still a lien on the, what's owed on the property on top of the cost to demo it. We'd have to make sure we're covered on that. There's a lot of, there's a lot of if-then aspects of this. And there's a lot of steps.
Matt, do we know how much the current lien is? Including any of the abatements that we haven't filed yet?
Paul, do you have that information?
I don't know the amount of his mortgage.
Is that something you would like to share with us?
The lien for the hotel?
Approximately?
About 900, 959.
But these are all ifs, an if, an if, and if.
Yeah, there's a whole lot of minutia here, and, and I, my decision's made, I, you know, I, that's, I'm just, you know, that's, that's mine, but.
You know, I guess my thought was if, if you would have showed up today with that million-dollar cash bond, we can talk.
Right.
But we have the CD that's not really doing anything for us, with my understanding, correct? So that's, my mind's made up too, then.
I, to me, the only thing that. I, to me, the only thing that is likable about the possibility of this plan is that the building as a shell could be valuable to a company who makes widgets and does something like that. But the plot of land alone would also be valuable, you know, they could build it to spec. This is a lot, a lot better than the other ones that was done in crayon last time, but...
The carrot that's getting dangled out there is, is minimizing the financial impact to our community to tear it up with the lien.
I agree. I would much rather have had the bond as an assurance, get the work started and have that set timeline. And then worst case scenario, we pull the bond and finish the work ourselves, and then it's at little to no expense to taxpayers. But I don't think the CD works in the same manner.
I know there might be somebody in the audience that would like to speak to this issue. I know there's one gentleman that said before the meeting he'd like to speak, so just state your name and, and where you're from.
My name is Paul Rhodes. I'm a new, relatively new residence here, and I've just showed some, I, I, the enter, the, the building, I saw some possibilities in it, and before I came here tonight, I didn't know all this history, so I know it's kind of maybe too late, too little, but I do believe, you know, I've kind of watched commercial real estate, and there's a lot of it out there, unfortunately, that, I came from Wichita before I came over here. But, you know, the, the convention part of the building, except for the fact that the, you know, the electricity's been stripped out, is, is, I think, an asset at some level. And I'd just like to see if there's any possibility the city could find something to go in there. Now with, with the new Hilton going in, and they've got some conferencing, the dream of making it what it was is probably not doable, so, anyway, just...
Thank you, Paul.
Paul, I have a question for you, sir.
And welcome to Hutch.
Yeah, welcome to Hutch.
Oh, thank you.
No, I have a question for you, if you could.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
In your wildest dreams, what would you see here?
Well, I'm a minister, and I've spent my whole life serving Jesus Christ, and I'm concerned about our country and I'm concerned about the church. And I was doing some walking over at the convention center, not the, I mean, the sports arena, and I run into a couple of people there that talked about how Hutchinson used to have, it's probably just an annual thing, or maybe a couple times a year, a citywide worship, time together of worship. And I think when you look across the denominational lines, that many people love God, but, but these issues have divided us, and with the way our country is, you know, people talk about prayer and revival, and there's other, there would be other aspects that, that parts of the building could be used for. They might be controversial, I, I wouldn't want to dive into that, but I see it as a spiritual asset to the city, and it's a bit of a, most people would call a pipe dream, but in my scriptures I've read that, that, you know, I find that God is a grandiose God, and I'm made in his image, so, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you for sharing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience have any thoughts they'd like to share? Any further comments from counsel?
I have a question for either Angela or Enrico. I can't remember where we left off in the budget with this item. Had we set aside funds?
So currently in the 2025 budget, we have a Plan A CIP and a Plan B CIP. So Plan A is if we have to pay for demolishing the atrium, and Plan B is if we don't. So then a few other projects would be able to be funded.
And those, Plan A was, was with the $2 million, it's, from what we're seeing, it won't be that much, correct?
I don't think it would be, no.
And I would also say that for 2024, there was a road, road project that has not even gone through design yet, that we were just gonna shelf. That way, we can take care of if we needed to demolish this project this year. So there was, I guess, three, three plans. So there was a plan for '24, and then there was a Plan A and Plan B for '25. So there's a few contingencies there, but we could do it neither this year or next year.
Thank you. I don't think the next question is for you. So we move hypothetically here. We move forward with the demo on our own timeline and whatnot. What, and, and he retains ownership of the property throughout that entire process, and if this was all covered last week, I watched it on like two times speed, so I apologize. But what's to stop him from then selling it and then doing something else that, I mean, what's, what other control do we have, or are we then just on the hook for that fund?
Not sure what your question is.
So we're gonna...
Are you worried about a, a transfer of, of ownership that would interfere with the demolition?
No, we, we've talked about that. What I'm thinking is like, we're gonna demo the, the building, and then it's a plot of land that he still owns, so he can still do whatever he wants.
With a tax lien.
With a tax lien. But, I mean, he could go build X, Y, and Z. Like, we don't, we don't main, we don't maintain any control just because he owes us money.
Still has to get a building permit from the city.
Right. But we wouldn't say no to that because he owes us a lien, would we?
Well, that's certainly a consideration.
But we would, okay, and do we hold all property owners to that same standard? This would be quite a larger one than...
I was gonna say, we don't have anything to compare to this.
Okay.
Joshua, I'm sitting here thinking, Bud, and we gotta be fair to our taxpayers. We got to, and I try to be a fair person, I really do. But we've been in this thing for five or six years, and I've been on the council ever since then. And, and one mind of mine says we ought to give you another chance, but I, I have to sit here and think, man, we've gave you chances, we tried to let you do something with this. Now I have a, thinking about it, that you came up with all these plans, and you got, I'm not real sure, I'm not a real financial whiz here, but this, what do you call that? The bank way you're doing this. I don't know if it's still ensuring us that the million dollars that we need to have, or, you know, I, I really, I feel for you, man, I do. And we, and just like this gentleman said, God didn't want us to be like this, but we, we have responsibility to our taxpayers, who calls us...
I have paid every property tax.
That's not, yeah, you're one of our taxpayers, but we have, what are we, 38,000, 40,000? We have 40 other taxpayers that...
That's why I'm only asking after December, you're waiting this long, after December, you all can have a property if I don't do it again, but that saves you that I'm willing to do something in the next three months.
Okay, here's, here's what I think. Since we have so many people that we're responsible for, these guys might not like what I'm gonna say. I think that we should take time, in my personal opinion, since we have so many, and they're gonna get mad at me for even saying this, I'm telling you this right now. Why don't we just deal away with this, like you said, and get it done? You've made a different offer on the table now. So my, and these guys want to get, they get, so do I. But I think, in my personal meaning, the way I am, I think we should hear from our taxpayers on this. One more time, I think we should do, and we get out and hear from our taxpayers, and I bet you when we get off, they're gonna yell at me for this, or whatever, but the taxpayers is who we got, we, we got to satisfy. And, and, or, I don't know, man, I think it's a hard, hard decision you put us in, because our taxpayers, we're responsible for them. And I don't know, it's, you put us in a bad, this position is harder than what it was before. Before, you didn't come up to us, you never said anything to us. And, and we, I was there when we offered you 1.6 million dollars, 1, 1 million, 6, whatever, I, I was there. I was, been on the council ever since. But this is probably the hardest thing I've ever seen do, that, that I have to think of the taxpayer. That's why I don't say anything, because I'm thinking it's going through my mind, it's going back and forth, I gotta be fair to this man, but we, are you being fair to us? Were you fair to us? That's another thing I have to check in my mind.
I think I was very fair, because, you know, you, you all understand, as a business owner, if anyone of you are a business owner, you have such a big building, and the city had a commitment of 3% to the building, and, but it was cut off.
Okay, let me tell you one...
My way and bloodway was cut off right there. You all knew it was gonna be...
All right, let me, let me say something now, all right? One last thing that I worry about, we just made, people are happy about our new hotel coming up. Now, we approved this, we're making competition for the other person that, that we said that we're gonna back 100%. You put another convention center here, even though we're a small town, you're adding another competition to the person that's gonna have the money that's already building it.
That is fully if you all want it. Otherwise, I just want to make it as a convention center, like a retail or banquet space, and sell it to the flooring company or whoever, just for the price I have, you know, I'm willing to just make a deal to whoever wants, and, you know, I know you all want me out of the city, okay, out of the city, but I just, if you all do it, or I do it, I've been in this business too long, if you want to build something like that, it'll cost you 21 million dollars. I say, tear just the rooms up and keep the convention space, there's so much you can do with that building. And it has almost 7, 10, 8, 8, 9 minutes. If I do it, if you all do it, I really recommend that is a solid concrete, you know, 15 million, 15 million dollar building. I don't think that should be demolished, but that's my recommendation to a city. If you all demolish that, you all are going to lose a lot of money, somebody, you always keep making hundreds, hundreds of thousands property taxes, if somebody just fixes up that building, if a church takes, if a, if some retail takes, that is a solid building.
So why is it all of a sudden now worth saving when it wasn't worth saving back then? The whole hotel industry with this 3% rebate, so many small businesses, and not even small businesses are operating where they're not relying on that 3% rebate or government kickback or whatever you'd like to call it. They're just making do with what they can earn. So when you lost a 3% rebate, and now you're saying that your whole business model is upside down, and you can't function any longer, but why wasn't this worth saving? You're saying it's worth 15, 20 million dollars. You've had this building for five, six years.
Mayor, please have Mr. Joseph come to the podium so he can be heard.
Sorry. I just think you're asking us to do too little, too late. You've always had control of this building, you could have done this all along, which is what we said a month ago.
I have offered, I had offered to build a new hotel, and I was denied that opportunity. And because of that, I walked away from this, because there was no way, no matter how much money I put, it was just like putting in a drain. And I offered a new, to keep the convention center and build, that's when the bids went out, that's when they got the idea to send bids out, and though I was the only person who put the new holiday in bid, you know, they selected leisure hospitality, and then you know, leisure hospitality walked out of the deal, and that's when, you know, and I, I was not given a chance. I, I had offered it from the beginning, because I knew as an old hotel, it would have not functioned. And on the 17th, I, I, you were not here when, when I came on the last city council meeting, we did a full set of plans for convention and everything that the city said they're gonna support for the storage and the tear down of, you know, and make it two different properties. And then I came to know, you know, and then I was shocked that after they said they'll support, I'm sure they got backlash and, and then they didn't, they didn't support. And so I'm still saying, I'll remove everything and keep this building, this, this will be worth, for somebody, a lot of money.
Steve, I agree with some of your comments. This is not easy.
No.
And I, I'll just tell you, I've heard from many of the taxpayers.
So do I.
And they're, they're, they want us to move on this.
I agree.
And they're willing to pay the cost. And thank heavens, the cost isn't what we thought it was gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand.
So that's where I'm at. So, but man, I agree with you, this is not easy to do.
No.
And, and you know...
I'm in the same boat. I was hoping he would come with the bond and we would just...
Yeah, yeah, but...
Bond does take a long time. I, I, I'm talking to bond people, but they want every financials, everything, and it, you know, the problem everybody's asking is, why you want a bond for your own building? And it's, you know, it's not understandable. Like, if I was a contractor who's doing a building, then they would understand, but asking me, when, when they, when I say I'm the owner of the building, that's when I get all this refusal, that, sorry, there's something fishy, you're asking for a bond for your own building. There, so then they're thinking that I'm, I'm taking a bond to do something bad to the building. And that's why it means nobody's going, you know, I can keep trying, in fact, that's what I'm doing, but a bond for owner to their own property, nobody's gonna, I mean, so far, I've been getting denial, asking me that there's something fishy, why you asking for a bond for your own building? And though I say I'm trying to remodel for the, you know, and the bank needs it, or the city needs it, they think it's, it's fishy.
You want to say something, chief?
Stephen Beer fired chief for Hutch. I think there's one thing that we should just have a quick discussion on here a little bit too, and that is what we deal with day in and day out, in the safety aspect of our workers in the city, my men and women, the police department's men and women that have to deal with this project if we keep kicking it down the road. We are gonna get somebody killed in this building, and that's, that's a fact, if we keep kicking this cat down the road. We take enough risks the way it is each and every day, my men and women respond on calls, but these unnecessary risks that we have with this building and stuff like that, it's just, there's no fence around it, it's gonna get cold here towards the end of October, you know what, that's gonna happen. There's gonna be issues again with individuals taking up homes or housing in that facility. And so I'm pleading you, I say a prayer every night for my men and women, and protecting their safety. And I want you to consider that the police officers, the firefighters that have to go into these buildings to take care of these situations is, that's a risk that we don't need. Thank you.
Would you like to say something, man? Just state your name and where you're from.
I'm Jackie Long. I live at 1329 North Floraine, across the street from the atrium. And I want to remind you that this last time, the building is unsafe to be in, it's posted that way, and there are people in and out of that building right now, and taking, I guess, at the owner's permission, they're removing things. There are people that are living in the building. I have one question. Was Mr. Joseph owner of this property the last five years? Yes or no? Does an owner that cares about the property or the city treat the facility as they have, or do they protect their investment? The only protection that has been done has been by our city maintenance people, okay? I mean, and at the urging and request of the city, not voluntarily, none of it. So I'm hearing a lot of things about why we need to trust Mr. Joseph, and, you know, he's very optimistic. I'm still wondering why we're having this discussion based on past behavior, and we're kind of sick of waiting. And I am particularly concerned and supportive of our police and fire people. There isn't anybody who belongs in that building, including Mr. Joseph's, Mr. Joseph's employees, and that's what we see, okay? So do or do not? I, I just don't understand the subtle interest after five years? Really? You've been in there, you're telling me that the convention center is gonna be a great deal? is gonna be a great deal for an investor? Might have been, five years ago, December 2019, okay? And there's plenty of hotel business here. Lots of events that fill hotels.
Yeah, the studies tell us, we need, we do need 80 more rooms.
Yes.
We can support 80 more rooms.
You know, good hotels. Anyway, I'm sorry for the emotion, guys. You guys do a wonderful job. You're professional people. Mr. Joseph has conducted himself professionally every time I see him here, and I'm wondering, are, are you even seeing what I'm seeing? You know? I mean, seriously, there's activity every day, people. Vehicles going around the building, vehicles without tags, vehicles without estate tags, people with backpacks, bicycles. What do you think is going on? It's not safe to find out. So there you have it.
I appreciate your-
Thank you.
-your kicking the pants.
Thanks, Jackie.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to approve moving forward with the demolition of the structure.
I'll second that.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
I think we had long enough, yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 6C, Consider Approval of IAFF Memorandum of Understanding.
Good evening, Council. Tom Sanders, Human Resources Director. I'm happy to be present with you today to review our last negotiated MOU with IAFF. Formal negotiations with this unit initiated on March 7th. We had five formal sessions and reached tentative agreement on August 1st. And last week, we received notification from the, the union that the tentative agreement was approved by their membership. Just to cover briefly the, the changes and modifications, Article 13 is a, removes a subsection E, which is referencing one-time payments made in 2025. Article 15 is callback and holdover pay, and this article has been updated to clarify the processes used to cover both regular or planned callbacks, as well as mandatory callbacks, which are unplanned. Article 18 covers working out of classification. In this year's contract, we are making that a, changing that from a flat amount to an hourly rate with a six-hour minimum. The 24-hour equivalency for an acting captain is going up from $20 to 36. And the 24-hour equivalency for an active battalion chief is going up from 30 to 48. We're also adding Article 19, which is a new article, which provides a 500-year, $500 per year additional pay for those employees in qualified specialty units. These include hazmat, rescue, TMS, and fire investigations. And, let's see, and then on the uniform allowance article, it updates and consolidates the PPE and uniform items currently provided. It changes from a cash allowance on the uniform items to a centralized quartermaster system. This system should be easier to administer for administration, and also improve the consistency in meeting uniform standards. Article 23 is unused sickly payout. That eliminates language that referenced grandfathered employees under the old pay, the old payout system. And then Article 7, 37 is duration of agreement, which covers the length of time. I think I skipped over, unfortunately, yep. Let's see, Appendix B has the adjustments for the pay ranges, and that'll be 5% for 2025 and 2% for 2026. And the merit pay matrix for Appendix C has been modified for an overall budget in 2025 of 4% and 4.25% in 2026. There is also a Appendix F that is new, and this covers the ground rules for the collective bargaining process for future negotiations. Overall, this economic package will increase the city's cost, at least on the, on the cash compensation side, 4.5% in 2025, and expected to be 4.25 in 2026. And with that, any questions?
This is the first time you've done a two-year contract, right?
Yes, it is. It's, it's released in a very, very long time.
Can you speak to the benefits of doing a two-year versus a one-year?
Stability. It also, it, it takes a lot of the union's time, a lot of management's time to work through these agreements every year. Think I mentioned, we started in early March and, you know, just got done. So that, we look forward to that. They look forward to it, too. Not that we don't like each other, but it takes a lot of time. So-
You had to sneak that in there, didn't you?
What's that?
You had to sneak that in there, didn't you?
Yes. Yeah. That's the biggest upside benefit. So, and that's, that's no small thing. It burns a lot of time.
Yeah, I commend both sides for the work that I know you have, the hours and hours I know you guys have put into this, to come to this agreement. I have a question about Article 18, working out of classification.
Yep.
How often does that happen, and what steps are, have been taken to avoid working out of classifications? I know there was some, like, changing in the, I don't know, the, what do you call it, organizational chart, over the past couple of years?
Yeah, there was, so the, the working out of classification piece, I know overall the financial impact for, that we're estimating that this will cost next year is about, about $5,200. It's relatively small. It's not something that happens a ton, but when it does happen, you know, it's a pretty substantial increase in responsibility. So we really thought that was fair in the overall package. I think that was a reasonable ask, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Tom. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
And last but lastly, so I'd be remiss to not thank Chief Beer and Jeremy Henry, the Division Chief, and then also, you know, our partners on the other side of the table, with IAFF, and with Patrick Weathers being the President. So we had a lot to work through this year. Again, we're excited it's a two-year agreement, and really appreciate everybody's efforts on that front.
Okay, and we have a two-year agreement with FOP and Fire.
Yep.
Okay.
Was there, just playing devil's advocate here, was there any thought given to staggering those so that you're not caught in negotiations again?
Yes, it was. We have one-year agreements with the SEIU groups next year, so they're gonna, by default, kind of be staggered. So we did offer two-year agreements with the SEIU groups, and, and they, you know, weren't ready to sign up on that, so, which is, which is fine.
Okay.
All right. Does somebody want to make a motion to accept the contract?
I move to accept and approve the IAFF memorandum of understanding, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Dawes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item?
Item 6C, Consider Vacation of a Platted 20-Foot Utility Easement at 4011 Sherwood. The applicant is proposing to vacate a portion of that easement on their property in order to place a shed there. There are no public utilities located within this portion of the easement. There is an overhead electric line to the west of the easement. If approved, the plans, the applicant plans to dedicate a 20-foot utility easement over the existing overhead electric line. That easement is included in your packet today. On April 23rd, the Planning Commission voted 7-0 to approve this at the public hearing. No one spoke in opposition to the request, and no written objections were filed with us. It's recommended that the city council follow recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve the vacation order, and authorize the necessary signatures.
All right. Any questions on this matter?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the vacation of a platted 20-foot utility easement generally located southwest 43rd Avenue and K61 Highway, and authorize the mayor to sign. Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
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 I have seven proclamations.
All right, we've got four proclamations. If Todd Davis would meet me at podium, we'll start with the cyber, cybersecurity.
You're nailing it so far.
Is this you?
It's me.
All right. Whereas, the City of Hutchinson recognizes the vital role that cybersecurity plays in our society, and the importance of partnering with local, state, and federal agencies, along with private organizations, to raise awareness about cyber, cybersecurity standards. And whereas, we share responsibility for protecting our community, our businesses, and our personal information from the ever-evolving threat of cyber attacks and breaches. And whereas, the need for cybersecurity education and awareness is crucial in driving the adoption of new, safer technologies, and ensuring that individuals and organizations practice diligence with their cyber habits. And whereas, the City of Hutchinson commits to remaining diligent and proactive against cyber threats, ensuring the confidentiality, integrity, and availability of our information systems. And whereas, this October marks the annual Cybersecurity Awareness Month instituted by a public-private partnership between the government and the industry to educate and engage in securing our digital lives. And whereas, the theme for this year's Cybersecurity Awareness Month, Secure Our World, aims to empower individuals and organizations to adopt more impactful and proactive cybersecurity measures. Now therefore, I, great fast, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby declare October 2024 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I know you well enough. I think you probably have a few words.
I have a few, just a few.
Okay, very good.
Everybody's already tired of, and nobody needs an IT presentation. But I do have a joke. So based on this, I win the award for the highest Scrabble score for a proclamation. So if you take all the words and put them together and give me a score, I win. Anyway. So let's talk real quickly about cybersecurity. We started a new program this year. Right now, we have 419 active users. Those are the people that are, that are in the city and actually going through cybersecurity training. And we've got, of those, we sent out 3,700 sessions and a whole bunch of phishing simulations. And so I just wanted to really quickly show you that we are an 85% strong. Yesterday, I started a new program where if people don't do their cybersecurity training, we're gonna shut their, we're gonna take away their computer rights. That's how important this is. And yesterday, this, the City of, of Arc City had a cybersecurity event at their, at their water treatment plant, and it, their water treatment plant is now in manual mode. And I'm not saying this was caused by that kind of an event, but it's likely that a, that it was just as simple as a user letting somebody slip through the door, and now the door's wide open to bad people, and they're, they're gonna have to pay some, sort of a ransom or something. So that's what we're trying to avoid. Not only that, we have six layers of, of backup in our water and sewer infrastructure. So we're really deep from a, from that standpoint, but the bad guys are really, really, really like that money. So let's, we're really trying to keep them out, and this, this really helps us do that. So I appreciate your time.
All right, thanks, Tom.
You bet.
I appreciate your work here at the city. I know you've dealt with a lot of things over this last year, as some other folks in the city have. When I called you in reference to the other item, you were on it for the city, to try to protect the city, and, you know, the thing which happened. So thank you for your work. It is important.
It is. Yes, thank you.
All right.
I wanted a hug.
We have Fire Prevention Week with Michael Kane and Chief Beer, and it looks like Mr. Dallow.
Jerry.
Jerry. Whereas, the City of Hutchinson is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting in Hutchinson. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, according to the NFPA, local fire departments responded to 360,000 home fires in 2022, from which there were 2,700 about civilian deaths. And whereas, fire departments in the United States respond to a home fire at the rate of one every 93 seconds when the smoke alarm sounds. Hutchinson residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety, and residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive the fire. And whereas, residents should make a home escape plan, drawing a map of each level of the home, showing all doors, windows, and should practice the home fire escape plan with everyone in the household at least twice a year during day and night. And residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things. And whereas, our residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore, I, great fast, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week. Thank you, Michael. Thank you. Anybody have a few other words?
A few words. Michael Kane, Fire Marshal. Thank you, Mayor, Council. As we come around to another year of memorializing Mrs. O'Leary's cow. At the core of what I do, Inspector Dowling does, our division does, is education. Whether it be the codes that everybody hates, or, or going to the schools like we will next week, it's, it's all about education, and getting our message out to, to everybody. So this, this year's theme is all about smoke alarms. Everybody, little piece of education, every house, by state statute, and by code, is to have an alarm. Yep. impart my knowledge. Anybody interactive? Those alarms need to be tested how often?
Thank you.
Jerry?
Oh, I speak.
That's right, once a month. It's easy. Push the button, you walk by, you push the button, it beeps at you, you know it's working. They are only good for 10 years. Another little-known fact, they are only good for 10 years. They have radioactive piece in there. Half-life is 10 years. So they need to be replaced. And again, the escape plan. And that's what we'll be going over with all the kids next week. So when they start coming home, say we need to do this. They're right. We told them, they listened. So, thank you.
Okay, Carla. As you're coming, just to let you know, you lost Scrabble tonight.
Absolutely.
And that is a blessing for the mayor. But we're gonna celebrate Source Water Protection Week. Whereas, the health, prosperity, and quality of life in, of Hutchinson citizens depends on a reliable supply of safe, high-quality drinking water. And whereas, protecting our drinking water is essential to preserve our own health and economy and that of future generations. And whereas, we strive to build opportunities and work together to ensure clean, safe source water for all. Whereas, the citizen, citizens of Hutchinson are encouraged to recognize this precious resource and help conserve the watersheds that are the source of our water, protect our shared water resources from pollution, practice water conservation, become involved in local water issues, and plan to protect water for future community health and economic viability, vitality, excuse me. Now therefore, I greatly fast, mayor of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September twenty-ninth through October fifth as Source Water Protection Week. Congratulations, Carla. Do you wanna speak to that?
Just wanna say thank you for recognizing how important the source water is for our community.
Is somebody here from the Hutch Chamber to accept this one? We have Katie Fallon here. And this is in honor of claiming Manufacturing Month. Whereas, recognizing Manufacturing Day falls on Friday, October fourth, two thousand twenty-four during Manufacturing Month in October two thousand twenty-four. Manufacturing Month is an effective way to highlight the importance of manufacturing in our community and draws attention to the many rewarding, high-skill jobs in the industry. And whereas, it supports and celebrates our local manufacturers and our school programs that prepare our future workforce. And whereas, Manufacturing Month provides communities with opportunities to connect educators and their students with manufacturing industry and provide them with a first look experience in the quality, of the quality manufacturers in Reno County. And whereas, manufacturing is a cornerstone of our economy, and it provides jobs for thousands of citizens in our community and serves many different industries, including agriculture, advanced manufacturing, renewable energy, food processing, aviation, and technology. And whereas, Manufacturing Month urges members of the community to join in recognizing the value of our manufacturers and the importance they serve in our county, state, and nation. Now therefore, I greatly fast, mayor of the city of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim Friday, October fourth, as Manufacturing Day, and the month of October, two thousand twenty-four, as Manufacturing Month in the city of Hutchinson.
I want to thank you all for the proclamation, we try to do that every year because it is one of our biggest economic drivers, right up there with agriculture. And we are actually known as the eleventh most economic diverse, economically diverse county in the United States via Site Selecter Magazine, and this plays a big part in that. And just to shout out, they are not in Hutchinson, but they do host a Manufacturing Day event every year, which does employ citizens of Hutchinson, Bradbury Group. I'm, it might be on Thursday this year, but you can check Manufacturing Day, which is mfgday.com, they have an in-person event. And also a quick plug, that this will also launch the beginning of our career quest year, where they will learn from manufacturers, along with our sixth grade students coming to visit the city as well throughout the next few months. So thank you all so much.
Okay. Now the council would like to hear from the audience, any audience members or citizens that may have a comment. If you could, keep it to five minutes, and we would love to hear from you, and please be respectful. Hopefully, Dale, you can be respectful, you think?
I will do my very best.
All right, thank you.
I'm Del Marie Shanahan Swer, I live at twenty-nine oh one Westminster Drive, and I am the chief operating officer of the Hutchinson Community Foundation. The Hutchinson Community Foundation has as our mission to inspire philanthropy, leadership, and collaboration to strengthen Reno County. This evening, I'm here to tell you a little bit about the Love Where You Live in Community Empowerment Initiative. So you may ask, what is the Love Where You Live Community Empowerment Initiative? This is a three-year initiative to provide Reno County communities with data and a process that will empower residents to make positive change and boost community pride. This process centers on residents' perceptions, dialogue, and collaborative action. We know from the Knight Foundation's Soul of the Community study that when people feel more attached, they are more likely to invest in their community and to take care of it. People in the community are more likely to look out for each other. They will welcome others and help others feel connected, and we want to catalyze that and see more of it. The Hutchinson Community Foundation is working with Innovation Economy Partners on this initiative. This company has worked with over fifty communities across the country on rural prosperity strategies. This company also is working with the McPherson County Community Foundation and the Western Kansas Community Foundation. The three community foundations are also working together to collaborate with, within our group as we evaluate the data and refine the process. The Love Where You Live Initiative has three components. First was a survey. This summer, we asked residents across the county to take the Love Where You Live survey, asking them about their perceptions. How do they feel about where they live? What did they find special? Who are their admired leaders, both formal and informal? What is their sense of ownership and belief in the future of this community? What issues are they paying attention to? And what metrics will tell them that the community is making progress? Innovation Economy Partners is currently creating a benchmark report of the data, plus other community data, for seven communities and the county as a whole. One thousand twenty-one people took the survey, seven hundred and twenty-two of whom were from Hutchinson. The next step is community workshops. We have four opportunities for Hutchinson residents to attend a community workshop on October the twenty-ninth and thirtieth and November the second. There are some specific times and locations that you can find at renosurvey.com and also at the Hutchinson Community Foundation's Facebook page. We're inviting residents and community leaders to come together for an interactive workshop to hear what came from the survey results, engage in conversations about shared priorities, and to start to generate ideas for taking further action. The third component is grant-making. In early two thousand twenty-five, Hutchinson Community Foundation hopes to see more applications to our Fund for Reno County from communities and organizations working to make progress on their identified priorities. Plus, we hope we'll inspire other funders to use the data to inform their own investment decisions. And then, in two thousand twenty-five, and once again in two thousand twenty-six, we'll turn around and we'll do it all over again. This is our ask, would you help us invite people to these workshops? I have some flyers to hand out to you that show you where all the meetings are, they're across the community, and we would appreciate your help in inviting people, getting the word out, so we can continue to do our work in this, this initiative. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. Anybody else would like to address the council? Hi, Greg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Greg DeGarmo, I'm the president of SEIU Local Five Thirteen Hutch Unit. I want to thank you for approving our contract last meeting, I apologize for not being present, I didn't check the agenda and catch that was on there. We do appreciate your approval. We are interested into your contract, this might work out good though, that, that way our two units, the city workers and dispatch can be offset from police and fires, it might work out pretty good. I know we do have an item that we discussed that probably needs to be handled in negotiations, so it'll work out really good, but I do appreciate the approval of our contract this year, thank you.
Well, thank you, Greg, and I noticed you weren't here, but I never thought for a minute you didn't appreciate us approving that.
I do appreciate it, thank you.
Greg, I like the idea of staggering the negotiations, I think that puts everybody from our staff, puts them in a, a better position to not enter into these negotiations.
Yes, I think, I think it'll work out, so we do have two units, we have the city workers, we have the dispatch workers, so it'll help make it not so tough for the city staff, management side, to deal with all four of us in one year, so it should work out better, I appreciate it.
Thanks for your work, Greg.
Anybody else from the audience have anything they'd like to address the council on? Yes, sir? Just state your name and your residence, where you're from.
Yeah, I live in Hutchinson, Kansas, and my name's Jeff Bame, and there are some questions I had and some concerns with, we had the demolishment of the St. Elizabeth Hospital, and there's also another building that has connection with St. Elizabeth from years ago. And I believe it's, the property address is twenty-one fourteen North Jackson. And it was built, I believe, around nineteen fifty-two, and that's where the nurses, and the Catholic nurses stayed in this building. And it, and this building is just a little bit north of the demolishment area. And that building's in a neighborhood, and this is kind of, kind of what we talked about at the beginning. I'm just concerned about this property because it's got busted windows, the woods, there's wood covering everything up, and I don't even know if anybody owns it or not. But it was, after it was used by the nuns living there, it turned into the Mental Health Institute. It was around that time, I had some really, really bad memories from there because I had, I won't get into that, but that was when it was the Mental Health Institute. And then later, it became, after, after the Mental Health Institute moved to the hospital, it became Horizons. I believe it would be, it became a center for, for help with people with drinking issues. And I'm just, I was just curious, had there ever been any talk at all about the fact that this building has connections with St. Elizabeth? And, 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 and this, and this piece of property, I don't know who owns it or not, but I could see it becoming an issue too with people going in there, homeless people. And I walked, I walked, there, there was glass all over the place, it's, all the windows busted and opened, and so.
Yeah, well, Jeff, I, two things, I, after you and I talked on the phone, I, I drove by there, and you're right, the front door's open, there's windows boarded up, and possibly some issues over there, but I did check with city staff, and, and that's privately owned. But there are some things in the works to maybe repurpose that building. You know, I'm not sure, but there, I was, I was provided an answer that I was happy with to hear. And, and I did ask the day we started demolition, what about that nun's quarters? And, and I asked Clint Nelson with Interfaith Housing, and he said that is a separate owner, you know, we're not, we're not doing anything with that yet. But, but I think there's some movements, movement on that, and especially with new housing eventually coming there, you know, we'll, we'll up our game on that.
Okay.
I appreciate you coming.
And it was, it was mentioned last October, when Interfaith went to the, the county commission, I think it was the October twenty-third meeting, and it's on YouTube, if you wanna watch it. That was mentioned, Commissioner Randy Parks asked about that property as well. Essentially, he said if the hospital had asbestos, would you assume that that building did as well? And, you know, what's the plan for it, because they are adjacent, and, you know, why would you build a really nice group of townhomes when that eyesore is right there? So Clint Nelson from Interfaith said that that is the plan. I think it's a funding mechanism that they're waiting on, there's a lot of grants and moving parts, so I think the goal was to focus on the hospital first and then move on to that. But that, the plans as they have right now, they don't include that property, so I think it's still up for, I, I don't know, up for speculation as to what it could possibly be.
I appreciate that very much, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff, appreciate your bringing that to our attention. Anybody else from the audience have anything they'd like to share with the council? All right, well, if not, we'll move on to council comments. Mr. Garza?
You know, guys, as, as you can see, this one here, it's not easy being a council member. You have very, very hard decisions to make. You gotta take, consider all our, our citizens in here. Trust me, I get a lot of calls, I talk to a lot of citizens. I try to be as fair as I can, and I talk to you guys like you're my friends, everybody in the city's my friend. We gotta be fair, so that was a very hard decision today to make. But, as a city council member, we have to make them, that's what we get paid, no, we don't get paid, do we? That's what we get elected for, so.
He's got, he can sign the checks now, so, anybody should talk to him.
But, that's one reason why we represent you guys, we try to do the best you can. I do wanna tell you, you have a good, good council. They, they take everything hard, as you can see up here, we take it all to heart, and it's not easy being up here, but you might, when the elections come around, think about it, because we need everybody's help to run the city, it's just not us, just us. So, try to back your councils and say a prayer for them, because it's not easy. I mean, I go to bed tossing and turning sometime, this is gonna be asleep this night to me now, so, but anyway, let's go on. Also, I had a meeting last Saturday at the Zone, and unfortunately, the Zone's gonna be closing. They let us know last week, I don't know when it's gonna be closing, but it's gonna be closing. So Pastor has done a great job, and I wish him well. So, we had a good, good meeting, it was, brought up a lot of stuff about the new housing that, our housing lady, her name is?
Carissa.
Carissa's doing a great job, and in fact, she's doing a really good job, really good job. So a lot of things are happening in Hutch, Hutch is gonna be going places, guys. As you can tell, it's doing well, we're doing good things here, we got a new inspector, new head of inspection, I welcome you here. So you're gonna like Hutchinson, trust me. You know, when I started here, I had black hair.
Lucky.
Yeah, he had hair.
Thought we were friends.
But other than that, guys, other than that's all I gotta say, and I, I love representing Hutch, and we do take it to heart. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet, John?
I'd note that big weekend this weekend for Hutchinson, we've got the Hutch Fest and Rod Run, and I apologize, Stacy, if I'm still in your thunder, but we have the Homecoming Parade on Friday, you can go into more detail on that. I would like to note that, I appreciate, where did Angela go? Anyway, staff's efforts on our bond rating, being as good as it was, I'd like to make sure we recognize that, and, yeah, that's all I've got.
Stacy? Excuse me, Scott?
Oh, okay, so she's passing off to me, all right. Well, I guess I'll just dive right into our favorite topic of panorama. So, we've put a lot of time in this to protect our, our community members up there, listening to them, trying to, trying to come up with the right solutions to take care of the problem they're facing. So, we've put in those, we put in the temporary traffic circles, which has now turned into more like an Indy car race with obstacles in the way. I set up there last week for a couple days and, and just kinda watched, and it's, we now have the speed still going up there, but instead of going down the right side, they're veering to the left of the traffic circles and continuing north. So, it's not really, it's somewhat slowing down the, the speeds going up there to the, the people that are actually paying attention. But then I also, Nick Kempel put out a video the other day that I happened to watch, and totally confirmed exactly what I saw the other day. So, and talking to Enrico, and there's just been a lot of, I don't know, negative criticism, I guess misinformation and stuff going on with all this. And what I'm looking at, and I'll need, I'll need support from council members as well on this, is like, the traffic circles are not working in like we thought they would. They're just not doing what they should have done to slow the traffic down the way it needs to be done. So we, we talked to Enrico, we So we, we talked to Enrico, we looked at maybe putting in stop signs to help stop the, slow the traffic down to where they have to stop, and see if that won't serve as better protection for the community members. And now we've actually created now, with the, with the traffic circles, we now have an influx of drones flying around, videoing what we have going on up there too. So it's just one of those things I think we need to look at a different angle and come up with a better solution, I guess, for that, for those.
And just to clarify, those were temporary.
Yes, correct.
To see fairly low cost, to see how it would work. And I'll just add my two cents. I was up there the other morning working, saw the same things that you saw, saw, I didn't see a drone, but I saw a wreck almost happen because somebody came the wrong way through it. Anyway, I agree with you. Go ahead.
No, it's, it's just something we, the community members helped us make this decision, what we wanted to do. And so we really wanted their input. And now after talking and emailing and texting to multiple community members up in there, I think I have like about a 90% response rate that they would all agree, let's try stop signs. So that's, and I'm sure Enrico have a little bit more on that too. So, and then there's another, I guess another area on Elm Street we still need to look at, because we still have 50, 60, 70 mile an hour going to Elm Street by Genesis on, by, on 30th. And then I think, I think that's all I have. Yep. I think that's all I have.
Nora, Stacy?
I'm all for it. I think that makes sense. I think sitting in that, the meeting at Del Nature Center and hearing all of the proposed solutions, all of which required additional engineering by the firm, I was really disappointed that stop signs weren't presented. And they seemed to be the most simple, cost efficient, and just like the obvious answer. And yes, anybody can blow a stop sign on my way here. Somebody, two people actually ran a red light right in front of me. So I don't know that, you know, stop signs on every corner isn't the solution. I think we just have some really bad drivers in town. But, and I might be one of them, because I might have gone through the first round about the wrong way. And then I figured it out on the second one. So they, they are new, but I don't think that they're the solution. Residents on 37th and on Lakeview have expressed to me that traffic's just cutting across and going up the other street. So we're, we essentially just moved the problem over instead of solving it. I do have a couple of items that I wanted to speak about. I took a phone call from a, I think a former resident about Farallon Cemetery. And in talking with her and visiting the site and talking to other people about the cemetery, it seems like we have kind of like a hole in our code enforcement that doesn't allow us to properly hold a cemetery accountable because of the nature of the work. If we did have to send in a mowing crew, it would be a very tedious job. And it would essentially either take too much time, or we would never recoup the funds if we had to bill for it. So I've been reading a little bit more from other cities' code. And it's hard to find anything that applies specifically to cemeteries. But it seems like the code that just considers them to be one of the businesses the same way as any other business in town just isn't quite adequate. Another code enforcement item, I saw that Burger King on Main Street was auctioned off. I don't know if, if anything, if it went through or whatnot. But I do know that code enforcement was working with the crews that were hired by the previous owner right before the sale. And in hearing Mr. Williams talk about how we do have a 30-day kind of a grace period where we allow them to, before we settle their bill, I just encourage code enforcement to stay on top of them because even with a new owner, it doesn't quite mean that they're gonna be compliant, or that they're gonna change, change their ways. And then, that was Atrium, Axel's Taxi keeps coming up. And apparently, there's a new vehicle. The business seems to be up and running in light of not holding an active taxi license from the city. You know, it's something that we've talked about. I've talked with Mr. Beagus about that. I've talked with Mr. Fast about that. And so I just encourage us to work toward a solution that essentially shuts him down, takes us out of the mix. I don't know what exactly, but I would love to have that on a future agenda item for a discussion, not specific to Axel's Taxi, but specific to our taxi code. I think we do have a couple of, one at least taxi services in town that is doing the right thing and wants to help, help residents. Yep, Bad Bobby Trail is coming along, and Rice Park's coming along. I missed your meeting. We were sick. Our whole house was sick.
I missed your child. We had the daycare ready.
We were, we were in, we were sick. It was also my, my reunion weekend. So for homecoming for Bueller. This weekend is the Hutch, Hutch Homecoming. The parade route, this is my final item. The parade route runs on 15th to, 15th and Plum, down to 11th and Plum, and then over to 17th. And we will end in the sports arena parking lot. So the road closures will be from approximately 3:00, 2:30, 3:00 until, I don't know, maybe 4:15, 4:30. We will be pulling up the road closures right after the parade ends to get traffic moving before the 5 o'clock rush hour. So if that is your typical path at that time, I encourage you to find a different way. Or park and join us and get some free candy. And I think that's it.
All right. I have a few items as well. Just want to let the public know that, that, Mr. Garza, you already mentioned it, but Carissa Paxton is working on some grants to maybe help the south, south of Maine, south of Avenue C, working, working through that. Exciting things. And that happens to be my district. And I think that there'll be some very good, very good improvements for the future. It may not be the near future, but, but we're definitely looking at how we improve that. The AA3 Moody Bond Rating, that's quite an accomplishment for those in the city that don't understand what that does for us. It makes our bonding, it lowers our interest rate. Part of the reason we have such a high, a high bond rating is because of the crime statistics in our town. And they are, they're very good when they look at, you know, what kind of bond rating they're giving a city. So that played a part in that. And of course, Angela's good work, and, and her staff certainly played, played a part in that. Southwest Bricktown Fiesta, we're rescheduling that. It was pretty well set up, and then it started raining. So it was canceled. We should know. I'm not exactly sure of the date or the ti, the, the date yet, and exactly where it's gonna be held. But we're working towards holding that event later in October. We, we will let you know more at the next council meeting. One last thing. On West 18th, we had a gentleman here that wanted to speak last time, and he left in the meantime, and, and received an email. We are going to put up no parking signs on West 18th during the luminaries. As a, as a safety concern, it's a, it's a small thing that we can do that, that should be low cost and high, high reward for our citizens over there. That, the luminary night, depending on weather, is, is, it's a zoo over there. And so I think that's a fair ask. One other thing I would mention about that is on 20th, 21st, 22nd, the unit block of West, of those blocks, the, the single blocks off of Main Street are so narrow that if, and there is parking, you can park on both sides of the street. I would suggest that we make one side no parking, because a fire truck and an ambulance can't get down there if there's cars parked on both sides of the street. That is a, something that I've, I've mentioned in the two and a half years that I've been here.
Does that require petition, or just a?
I, I was told, where does it end if we do those streets? Because there's a whole lot of streets that are like that.
Well, I want speed bumps and no parking in front of my house.
Okay.
No, but really, I agree.
Deann X from the City of Hutchinson. What else do you want?
So, but, but what is the process? Because I do, I, every once in a while, somebody asks me kind of offhandedly about what does it take to get either speed bumps or a dip or no parking on their street. I think that there are definitely streets, you know, this kind of hearkens back to what we were talking about, where could you even park buses if you wanted to park buses in town if that weren't in our code? There are streets that are so narrow that you would never be able to park a bus and drive a, an ambulance or a fire truck down. So what is our current process as it stands?
Why don't we leave that like this? Staff, will you work on this and figure out how we can move forward, maybe with some small steps in a direction that we all could feel comfortable with? I, you know, I think there's a big difference between a few blocks of putting up no parking.
I agree.
Then dips and.
No, I agree. We, well, and we had a conversation a couple of months back about, did we want to formalize the process for traffic calming? And we decided no. And I feel like this is kind of getting back into that, because it seems like the, the roundabouts on Panorama just kind of popped up. My impression was that those were going, that was gonna come back to council before they were installed. But that wasn't the case. And it doesn't seem like it's, that it followed the same process of Cleveland Street, for instance, which letters were sent out. It was sent to engineering, and then it was sent to engineering again. And then, then it was decided not to do it. And that stemmed from a study that was performed way prior to that. So I, kind of, it makes me lean towards, we need a formal process for things like this. Or if we don't have a formal process, we at least need some kind of flow chart that we're following. Because, I don't know, I think if we're gonna learn any lesson from Panorama, it's not that traffic circles don't work, because they do. But it's maybe that we went about the wrong process for determining what was the solution to use.
I agree. I think that, you know, it seems like the loudest voices get heard, or if somebody brings something, we react. I wonder if we could have a policy where we don't have to like immediately react, especially when it's something like speeders or, or public safety issue getting down the street.
Does that go to planning and zoning first? Does that?
Right. I think that's, that's fair. I, I hope you can see our hearts on this thing. And, and it would make it easier for us if we did have a policy that we followed, and how do we get something done? So.
A policy for temporary measures, or a policy for permanent?
Well, I think she's talking about permanent type stuff.
Well, a policy of how we consider requests, how do we prioritize them? You know, I think if, and what quantifies something that we would say yes to, and what, what would we say no to? Because residents could easily band together and want no parking on their street. But does that make sense for the neighborhood? You know, what, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a different conversation than a one night event, that somebody is citing a safety issue, that we made that decision. And I don't think it's a big deal that we made that decision. I think we're talking about more like, like the Lucille Traffic Light, like Panorama.
Yeah.
Circles, traffic circles, so.
I mean, I think there are a lot of, there are a lot of people who want stop signs or traffic calming measures in their neighborhood. But because we don't have a process, you don't know where to start. And when you don't know where to start, how do you, how do you start? You have to be really brave. And that's asking a lot of people.
All right. Well, hopefully staff hears the council's concerns. And Enrico, it's all yours now.
An update on the traffic circles for Panorama. We do intend to remove them tomorrow. And we'll move forward with stop signs. Locates have already been called in, so all of that can just take place tomorrow. I, I do want to touch on the traffic circles a little bit, just to provide context. So around the time that we were looking into the 43rd and Halsted, to have that be a four-way stop due to all of the crashes there, we then analyzed and sort of looking at 43rd as a whole to try to have that be more of a, a uniform speed. Because you have 45, 35, and you have parts that are in the city, parts that are in the county. And while we were looking at those things, residents did come to us about Panorama and the speeding issues that were happening there. And over the course of a few meetings and trying to look into resolving the 43rd and Halsted four-way stop and what to do there, we did spend some time with, meeting with the community on options for Panorama. Some of them have come to council even before we started meeting with them. And they had shared with me that, you know, the city in the past had put white striping down on the roads, and there was a traffic study that was done. But they've been complaining for over a year to try to get the city to do something. So I suppose there is an element of process there. And what is the process? But we took that to heart, and we had good momentum for the 43rd and Halsted in trying to resolve that issue. And then we applied that to Panorama. I think a few thousand dollars, maybe $1,200 was spent on materials for that work. That was all done, performed in-house. We knew that it was gonna be a temporary measure. If it was anything permanent, we'd definitely budget for that. A lot of, due to the, the costs, we were just easily able to absorb that within our street budget. But I did want to provide some, some necessary context there, that while we were looking at 43rd Halsted, the speed on 43rd, then this group, so in those meetings, we did talk about all three of those things on more than one occasion. And among the whole menu that was provided to them, one of the reasons per our traffic consultants, our traffic engineers, they said that speed sign, or stop signs were not a, an advisable form of traffic calming. So that, you may not solve the problem by just putting in stop signs. And so they advised on a few other things, and that's what we ended up presenting. Some of the things that we would have presented, like a speed hump, for example, that road is like a milling's road. So structurally, it was gonna be really hard to even put a hump there. So whatever we, if we were to put a hump there, it was gonna end up being permanent. It would just have been a block of concrete. So just through a process of elimination, that's how we ended up with the circles. And so we were going to evaluate and troubleshoot, troubleshoot that. But based on the data when we were looking at it, several vehicles were driving in excess of 70 mile an hour along that road, along, along that stretch of Panorama. So there was a genuine safety concern there. From a volume standpoint, it was like 1,100 vehicles. I don't know if that's on a per day. But it's a, it's a large amount of vehicular traffic that does travel Panorama. So that's where some of the necessity was coming from, to try to resolve these issues just while we were kind of at it. So I did want to provide some context there. And in other, in other news for, for how we plan to handle snow and ice for future winter weather events, we do plan on placing a priority for residential streets in Hutchinson. We'll have a, a formal presentation for you all next council meeting to, to at least share with you what the, what that approach will look like. It can take on many forms. There's many ways to do it, to do that work. But we're gonna at least share the approach that we plan to, plan to take. I was gonna mention the bond rating as well. So thank you all for, for doing that. I think that's all that I have. And I'll stand for any questions if you have them.
I don't have anything else? Is anybody else?
Yes. I'd like to thank everybody coming out to our night meetings. It has proved it works. I won't say that's great. it works, I will say that's great. So keep coming out and proving us right.
Garza, you said we all liked each other, now I'm, now I'm following. It is, it is working, thank you all for being here, I appreciate it. And, and it's really, I, I got a lot of work done this morning, what I, which I otherwise wouldn't have been able to get done, so. Anyway, thank you all for being here. Motion to adjourn?
Second. Or are you looking for a motion or making?
Yeah, no, I can make that, yeah, you second it, do, I guess we need to call roll.
Yes.
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 Yep.
Yes.